Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey, hey, everybody. We're excited you're here today.
We sure are. We have Julie and Colin from our team here as well. Hey, guys, welcome.
Good morning.
How's it going, everyone?
So today, we're going to be talking about selling events and specifically the mechanisms of how you set things up on your site to be able to sell seats to the events that you have. I'm going to go over, not in huge detail, just for the sake of time today, but I will talk through and give some examples as we go through our content here today about how you might use what I'll be sharing for your make and take classes. So maybe you are demonstrating Young Living product, but in exchange for, you know, maybe the cost of the supplies, you're making roller bottles, maybe you need them to give you two bucks or whatever it might be to cover supplies. If that's you, then this is going to be a cool way for you to get this accomplished today. Another use case here would be if maybe you do group AFT sessions once a month. This would be a way to take payment for those calls and get people signed up for those events. And then also, if you do live workshops or other types of engagements where people would be paying to sit and hear from you, these are all going to be some exciting use cases. And we're going to be using, focusing here today on the Get Oiling Events Manager. Now, for all of the things that I've shared with you today, you could go off and every single time you need something like this and create a page on your Get Oiling site, a dedicated page to use just for this purpose. And of course, you could follow that and create a little funnel, they pay, whatever. But what if you want to actually have a list of events on your website where you can actually share the stuff that you're doing and people can pick and choose and see that there's more than just the thing that they were promoted and they can take advantage of that? Those are the kinds of things we're going to be talking about here today. Before we get into it, y'all come over into the chat. Good morning. We're so excited to see you. Is anybody else getting any distortion and sound? Suzie mentioned sound distortion.
You sound fine to me.
Okay, great. Okay, excellent. And you guys, as you're here in the chat, let us know where in the world are you and what kind of event are you hoping to sell? Tell me in the chat. We are so excited to have you here with us today. I do see that my mic is not actually set up here, so this should sound better.
It does sound clearer, yep.
Fantastic. It's way better than these guys, which is, I think, what was picking up before. So, perfect. Glad we got that worked out. It's a fun day for me and the world of technology, and we're about to make it a fun and productive one for you. So, welcome Norway, New Jersey, Michigan, Channel Islands, New York, Minnesota, Canada, Alabama, Alberta, Connecticut. Welcome, you guys. We are so excited. What's up? Florida just turned up. Panama, also Frisco, Texas. Thrilled to see you guys. We're excited to have you here today. So, let us know again, head over into the chat. What kind of event do you want to sell? If you're promoting an event on your Get Oiling site, you want to sell something? You want to do a Zoom make and take? Oh, that's exciting, Greg and Sherry. Something about emotions and spring renewal, feeling excited about the change in the weather here. What's up Minneapolis? Awesome. Vermont, beautiful. We're so thrilled to have you guys here today. I do have a handful of slides that I want to go over with you, and we are going to, of course, do quite a lot of looking straight into a Get Oiling account today and kind of doing this stuff in real time. So, so we're going to be doing that. We also do have several people who signed up for a live work review. So, we're going to make some space for that as well, and I thank you in advance for your patience. So, let's go ahead, you guys, and we're going to get out of video, get into these slides and get this show on the road. I'm so excited to be back with you in my normal place of broadcast this week. Things are just a little less strange. Camera malfunction, but you know, there's always going to be something, right? All right, I'm seeing Aroma Freedom Events. All right, fantastic. You guys are going to appreciate that, I think, what I'll be sharing with you today. So today, we're going to talk about how to set up, promote, and sell your in-person or virtual events using Get Oiling. So what we'll get into today are how you can go about taking payment for your events and Get Oiling. That could be, again, for make and take events. This could be for group AFT sessions. Or maybe you teach online yoga classes, or you have workshops that you teach that are outside of presenting Young Living. Maybe you're teaching your expertise in some other way and you take payment for those things. That would be a use case for what we're talking about here today as well. And then, of course, as promised, we do have our live help and Q and A. If you are here on our live call here on Zoom, go over to the Q and A box and add any questions. If you have them, please do that now. If you have questions that you've brought to the call that you need our help with, and of course, if you have questions that come up for you throughout today's presentation, then please you put those into the Q and A so that your question doesn't get lost. It can kind of get buried in our very exciting, active chat here. So, if you are watching this as a replay, make sure you go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession so that you get notified of these calls. You know what we'll be talking about, and you can get a link to join and be on Zoom, just like this amazing group of folks who are here today. And if you want to work together on a live call, like several have chosen to do today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview and we can spend some time working together on whatever it is your priorities might be in your business. And if you want a hand getting set up, if you want things done faster, easier, better, you want to have our qualified team help you get things started. If you're moving to Get Oiling from another platform or multiple platforms, this is often the case, or if you just want to build the website of your dreams, whatever that might be, go to getoiling.com/conceivers. We have an incredibly talented team. They're ready to help you achieve your goals. So today, we're going to be focused on using the Events Manager in Get Oiling. And specifically, we're going to be talking about how we use the Events Manager along with our store to create listings that we can sell on an ongoing basis. So today, we're going to, again, be focusing on the Events Manager. A lot of the mechanics of what I'm sharing with you today, you could 100% set up on pages and create a funnel every time you want to have a new thing. But we have this really cool feature on the site where if you go to your Get Oiling website address.com/events, it'll show all of your upcoming events, right? And so that is a really great way to reinforce whatever it is that you're doing and to get additional exposure to it, right? And especially if you do events on an ongoing basis and you want more people to be exposed to the events that you're doing, having that digest, that sort of list of things that you've got going on, is really going to be advantageous. And that's something that you really should be doing if you're doing events. Because if you have pages, the likelihood of someone clicking through enough places, falling down a rabbit hole on your website to reach that opportunity to join a live event is going to be far less than, of course, they saw a digest of events on your page. So if you want to learn more, I can't get too, too deep into this because we'll be here for six hours today. If you want to learn more about events in Get Oiling, then you can go to Blogging at Events, this playlist right here. And Kim, your question here, will this help promote my classes? This is really more about the infrastructure of how you set up your classes to receive payment for them. I do get into, though, here in this playlist that I'm pointing out here, ways that you can set up and then run your events. And in this particular instance, I am going to be referencing, because there's a checklist that comes with this one that's super convenient, that you can use for online events as well. You would just have to sort of modify the location information, right? So, that does, if you go to that video in the description on our YouTube channel, you'll see that there is a checklist that goes with it. This is not something we're going to be going over in any detail today, but it is something that you're going to want to visit before you execute what I'm sharing with you, because you're going to want to know before you have your event, what it's going to be about, you know, what's the, all the details, right? And then what are the things that you want to get from it, et cetera? So, if you have not created an event with Get Oiling yet, I definitely recommend this training as a sort of precursor to what I'm going to be going through with you guys here today, okay? And this checklist, you're going to be able to use every single time you plan and set up an event. And we do have a lot of other really exciting trainings, again, in that playlist on our YouTube channel. Cindy says that she is a DIYer that flips antiques, furniture, collectibles with this platform work for that. Yeah, you could, you could sell anything with us, Cindy. Just make sure, we talked about this on last week's call on our channel. You can promote all kinds of things on your Get Oiling website. Just make sure that the way that you're sharing is set up for optimal compliance. So be sure to maybe take a look at that. What can I promote on my Get Oiling site was the last week's training, and you can learn more about that. But I can't imagine Young Living having an issue with you flipping antiques. I don't think that that's anything in competition with your oils, right? Matter of fact, I bet you use lemon oil for some of that, right? Anyway, all right, so we're going to be getting into utilizing the Get Oiling Store, which Cindy, quick note, by the way, if you want to list those pieces of decor and collectibles, we have a store that you can use to display those as well. All right? So if you want to learn more about the store, it is a newer feature, so the playlist is growing. But you can find that here on our Get Oiling YouTube channel as well. It's Get Oiling, sorry, youtube.com/GetOiling. So, what I'm going to be sharing with you today is really going to be ideal if you're looking to sell access to a live event. And then maybe also, you want them to have the ability to see the other things that you're selling. Maybe you are offering AFT sessions, but you have a journal that you sell, right? Or you want to upsell a private call with you and they can add on a private one-on-one call with you, right? These become things that are exciting and possible and have a great potential of converting well for you if you're utilizing our store to actually take payment for your events. So, let's talk first about the workflow here. Once I get through all of these bullets, I want to encourage you to maybe take a screenshot of this, because these are going to be the steps that you want to follow in setting all of this up. And of course, I will walk through this with you live. First thing you want to do is that event checklist that I just shared with you a moment ago. Make sure that you've planned out your event using that checklist. Then you're going to go into Get Oiling and set up your event. In doing so, you're going to have the name, description, details, date and time, a featured image for the event. And you're going to set it up as a direct link only. The reason why we're doing this first is because we don't want this to be a public event that's published on your events digest or otherwise found via search engines, okay? We are going to go back and change this after we complete these steps. And then finally, we want to allow self-registration. Now, we are going to, after this, create a date-based campaign for our event confirmation and our reminders. Now, we do have training in our campaigns on this. I will show you fairly quickly today how to get this set up. But the idea here is that obviously your event has a date and time. We want to be able to let people know that they're confirmed for the event, but then send out the reminders ahead of the call, right? Or the live event in person. So that's going to include, of course, any welcome messages, any pertinent details. So let's just say, for instance, when you're setting up your event, you know that you're going to meet via Zoom, you're not going to put the Zoom link in the event description, right? Because they have to pay first, and then they get that information. If you're having an in-person event, you're sharing what's going to happen, but then you say, after you register, we'll send you the address, right? That's the kind of information we're going to be putting inside the campaign, right? So do take note, please, like, write this down, make a note for yourself. When you're setting up your event and you're taking payment for it, if this is not a free event, do not, please do not put the join link for a call or the details to show up in a place where people can see it before paying, right? And then where they're going to see it is in their inbox, and that's what this campaign is for, okay? So we're going to welcome them, thank them, send them any pertinent details, and then any reminders, links, et cetera, right? Before the event. Next thing we're going to do is create an automation. Okay, and the automation is going to RSVP them for this event that we've just created and apply the campaign that we've created. Finally, we'll create a product in the Get Oiling Store that sells a seat to this event. And so this is going to have, of course, name, price, type, image, et cetera. And then we're ultimately, that automation we just created, we're going to attach that to run after someone places an order. Then we go back to the event that we made, we make it public, we add that product we just made as the URL, and now we are off to the races, okay? So we're going to walk through this. I know that was a lot to just talk through. We're going to actually walk through it. And the example that we are going to use, we head over here to our Get Oiling account. And by the way, this is the checklist that I mentioned. You're going to want to grab this, make sure that you have watched that YouTube video that talks about setting up those events so that you know exactly what to do here. But if you have all of this, you're going to very easily be able to go into your Get Oiling and to create an event, all right? So, the example that I want to share with you guys, because I see that there's a lot of folks here who are talking about having regular group AFT calls, let's go ahead and use that as the example. Now, just so you know, I have already gone into Canva and I've created an image, right? And so this is just, it's very generic. I'm not putting dates and times on it. I want to be able to use this every single month. I want you to be thinking in an evergreen way, right? The only things that need to have the dates and times on them are your campaigns, right? Because they're date-based, which are going to be connected to these events, which of course are date-based. So, real simple here, Aroma Freedom with Jane Jones, very simply made. You could create something like this in Canva pretty quickly and easily. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go over here to Vault. Why am I going to Vault? I'm going to Events. I need more coffee. Here we go. Go to Events. And I'm going to go create an event. The event name is Aroma Freedom Group Session. You could be cuter than this, and whatever you do, it's your choice. Here, I'm going to say, join us on, what's our date going to be? We're going to call it Thursday, the 6th of April at 5:00 PM Eastern Time, and it's going to go for one hour. So I'm going to go ahead and just set up that time from 5:00 to 6:00 PM Eastern Time on April 6th. So I'll just go ahead and type this here. Join us on April 6th at 5:00 PM Eastern for a one-hour live Aroma Freedom Session. And then, of course, elsewhere in this event description, you could put, what is Aroma Freedom? You could paste, you could pop in a video here of you explaining what happens, or maybe a testimonial or whatever it is that you'd like, put that information in here. So, we look forward to seeing you there. I'll just pop that in here. But again, you could put a lot more here if you'd like. So we've got the name, we've got the description, we've got the date, time. I have created this image. I'll go ahead and upload that. By the way, this is 1200 by 630. I've done this for a specific reason. It's an ideal sharing size. Because if you were to say, take the event link and share it on Facebook, for instance, this image is going to populate well, right? So, 1200 by 630 is what I used as the image resolution here. I'm going to make this direct link only because I don't want it visible on my website yet. I'm going to keep this checkbox here, and I'm going to ignore all of this because we're basically taking care of this stuff with our automations and the, and the store listing. So I'm going to save it. And that's done. We could actually go and view it real quick. See, again, you can have lots more information here if you'd like to. But now, let's go on to our next step. Now, if you remember, if you took a screenshot, the next thing that we want to do is create a campaign, and this is going to be a date-based campaign. Really simple, straightforward stuff. We're going to go to Create. This is going to be Aroma Freedom. Let's see, we're going to call this Aroma Freedom Group Call, and we're going to copy this. And I think that's a fine name to share with people here, so that's going to go here. We're going to create it. And so what we want to do first is create a message that confirms, so you're register, registered. Details inside, right? And so we can say, looking forward to working with you on our upcoming live call. And then we could say, details. And this is where you would put the Zoom link, right? Date, time, et cetera, right? And if there's anything else that you want to give to them as pointers and so on, then of course, you would put that here. So this is what they get right away. So we're going to add that message. Right? So that's day zero. That means no matter when they get started with this, they're going to sign up and get this right away. Now, we want this to be a date-based campaign. If you recall, this is going to be, the campaign is going to, let me see, I want to send them a reminder. So our event is on the 6th, right? I want to make sure they have a reminder the day before, so I'm going to make this start on the 4th. And I'm going to go ahead and write my second message. So, reminder, our call is tomorrow at 5:00 PM Eastern. And then we'll add more information here, Zoom link, et cetera, right? Put more, put your email in here, just reminding them here, calls tomorrow. And we're going to make this day one. So you see, that's going to send the day before, April 5th. We can go into advanced settings and say that I actually want this to send at 9:00 AM on April 5th. Okay, now I'm going to write one more message, and this is going to say, we're live in an hour, right? And this, we put our Zoom link, other details, right? We add that, that's going to go out on day two, and that's actually going to be, because of how we set this up, we set this up two days before the event, right? You see that on April 4th here. That's going to send on April 6th, and since our call is at 5:00 PM Eastern, this is central time. We're going to send this at 4, let's see, 3:00, 3:00 PM Central is 4:00 PM Eastern, so 3:00 PM Central, all right? So that's an hour before the call. There we go. All right, so this is good to go. We made it. Now, they're going to get an email to let them know, hey, you've registered for our Aroma Freedom Group Call. So excited to have you. The day before, they're going to get an email in the morning that says, remember our live calls tomorrow. Here's some things you might want to think about, et cetera. And then finally, after the live call, you can have this here. Now, optionally, you could send a second day-two message for this campaign. Maybe a few hours later, depending on how long you anticipate taking to process the video, et cetera. If you save these replays and say, for instance, embed them on a page in a vault, you could have that link be in here as well. Otherwise, I would just keep it simple, keep it looking like this, and you're good to go. All right, so we've got our campaign. Now, we're going to go create an automation that applies an RSVP to our event and applies that campaign. So this is going to be Aroma Freedom RSVP. It's going to be Aroma Freedom 4/6/23. There we go. That's our keyword. We're going to add action, event RSVP, Aroma Freedom Group Session. And then we're going to add action. Here's our campaign, Aroma Freedom Group Call, add, create. Voila, that step is done. Now, we can go and create a product in the Get Oiling Store, and then we can finish our setup here. So let's go over to our store. We'll go and create a product. And this is a product, and I want you to think about it like this. Obviously, every time you create a new event, your folks are going to need to RSVP and see that that event is for a specific date and time. The product that you set up here, you can set up once and use it every time. So if you have an Aroma Freedom call every month, what you set up here as a product can be purchased every month. The only thing that you're going to need to change out are the details of that automation and campaign that we just set up, okay? That's basically it. So now you'll be able to use this product every month as a way to have people purchase, right? But you're just going to be changing the automation that's attached to it, okay? So the product name is Aroma Freedom Group Call. We're going to charge 27 per person. This is a service. We're going to add a photo. I want to add a design from Canva, and I think actually, I don't have my cheat sheet with me. Greg, can you remind me, what is the, there was an ideal image size to add for the first photo, right? Is it like 1200 by 1200? Was that right?
That should work. Yeah, I think, yeah. I don't, I mean, it does reflect. It's, I think it's more of like, are your store product photos consistent, you know, are they consistently vertical or portrait? I've seen some people have some really nice results with sort of vertical format, you know, like, sort of like, you know, a screen, a phone screenshot might be. Others do square, you know, it just has to be consistent with each other to look the best.
Perfect. That's, that's, that's a really good point. Yeah, so whatever size you're typically using or resolution, whether it's square or you're using that 1200 by 630 that looks really good on Facebook, for instance, and when you send a link to somebody. So what I'm going to do, because I've already created a design, right? I want it to look the same. So let me go to Projects and find this one that I already created. And look at that. It's basically the same. I am going to modify it just a little bit and just make it look a little bit nicer here, so it shows up better. But that looks good. I'm going to send that to Get Oiling. That was easy. It's going to add to your gallery, and then we can add that in as our picture. All right, so this is where we can say, ready to join an upcoming group session. Add this to your cart now, and we look forward to working with you, okay? You can, of course, add more product details and descriptions. If you want to talk more about what Aroma Freedom is, this is going to be an ideal place to put it. It's going to be a little lower down on the page, right? We're going to, they can only purchase one, although if you want them to be able to purchase seats for multiple people, you could technically do this, although my recommendation would still be to keep this at one because you want to have the contact information of every person who purchases, right? So this is available, available for sale. Maybe if you have a maximum, you don't want to have more than 10 people on the call, right? The inventory count, maybe 10 there. You would want to go back on a monthly basis and modify this if that's the case. I'm going to go ahead and keep this. Better to have, I think having too many people is a, is a good problem, right? All right, so we're going to set this up. If you want to maybe advertise a sale price, you could certainly do that here. This would be where, if you want to have add-ons, so maybe you, you can add on an additional, like a private call with you, something like that. You could add that here, totally up to you. Or you could attach any related products. So maybe there's a one-on-one session. We'll attach as a related product, so we can suggest that to them when they are checking out. So after someone places an order, we're going to, the only thing we're going to do is add this automation that we've created. And then you can say as well, check your email. So this is the instructions, right? So check your email for a confirmation from me. If you don't see one soon, email, and then put your email address here, right? So we're going to create the product. And then our final step. View Product. We're going to copy this. Oh, yeah, one more thing that I would recommend that you do. How do we, Greg, if I want this to be something that is not immediately visible in the store?
That is at the top right, I believe. What's the name of the field? Or, wait, okay, so you're in the products. I think that's actually down a little bit low. Sorry, I was looking at, thinking of the collections. It is availability there, that second from the left there.
Unlisted.
I think that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, so if this is, if we're promoting a specific event, then we do want them to only find this because they've clicked from the event. So do make sure that you set this up as unlisted. Go to Save Changes. You will still, if they have the link, now you can actually see this little eyeball here is crossed out. They will be able to see it, right? If you, if you share the link. But it's only going to be found from our event page. So what that will now look like is we will head over here back to our event that we created. Here we go, which is currently a hidden event. It's about to not be anymore. We'll go to Edit. All right, and now we will put this event link right here. And we will make this available on our events page. We'll go to Save Changes. Let's go view Jane's site. And let's actually go over here to Events. Here we go. We've got this coming up. If we go to Register, I think, oh, wait, you know what? If the event link, here's what we need to do differently. Sorry, you guys, go to, over here to Edit Event. We have to uncheck this Self-Registration. Save Changes. Now, Learn More, take some straight over here, right? So now they can't RSVP on the page itself. They have to go straight over here. They can add it to Cart. They could go ahead and add this on with you as well, right? So let's talk about how this might, you know, change slightly based on how you set things up. If you are offering a, let's just say, maybe you're, you're doing a make and take, right? So you would have, obviously, the name of your make and take. You would have the very So you would have obviously the name of your make and take, you would have the very specific information about your make and take here. You know, your, all of those details, pictures, etc. And then the store that you would set up, you would have a make and take, you know. Instead of Aroma Freedom, generically here, you would have a make and take session or something like that, right? And then they would pay for that here. And of course, what happens is, once they pay. They will now become, when you go over to your event setup, once someone pays, they will actually be in your attendee list here. Right? So you can actually see who's RSVP'd, just like you would have if they registered. For a free event, except the only way that they can register is to go over to your store. And make a purchase right here by adding to cart and checking out. Right? So that is how you connect a store item, right? A product in the store here. Over to what you're offering with your event. So if you have your store set up, if you're selling things in your store. This is a fantastic way to combine those purchases and help people get more out of what you offer. And of course, for you to be able to promote and sell those seats. And again, really quickly, if for whatever reason you don't have the store set up yet, or you wanted to maybe be just slightly more dialed in. To how you're making all of this work, the other option would be. To create a page where they would check out, you would of course attach the automation to that page. And any, you would want to determine what page they go to after they've purchased, if you're doing so, and then the link to that page. Would go right here, right? And do make sure that we uncheck this allow self-registration. So that when they see this, they can't register, they have to click here to learn more. And it takes them over to either the store listing like this, this product page. Or to a page on your site where they would fill out a payment form, alright? I am excited to hear what kind of questions that you guys have and. See if there's anything that we can walk through to help you make more sense of this. And then of course, we do have several live work reviews to go through today. So Cornelius says, with a couple of changes, I could also sell evergreen events with pre-recorded videos. So with your. The thing about events and Get Oiling is that they are, they are date-based, right? So your, your. Sort of log of events that you have in Get Oiling are going to show in the order of when they occur. We don't currently have recurring events. Set up as an option. But. For evergreen, I would recommend something more like a funnel. So that way you could have, you know, a page that, you know, says, you know, here's this thing, it's always for sale. The funnel is going to be as the most evergreen option possible, where you've got something that's date-based, you want to be using your events. If you want to set up. If you want to be truly evergreen on the backend, pages might be the way to go where that's concerned. And then you could create a recurring, or you could go in and create an event every month and then have that actual link. Just like I put in the product listing, you could have that go off to the page where they can get that information about the recurring stuff, register for that. And then whatever applies, where they're sent is going to be the same, no matter what. Yeah, and if they're pre-recorded videos, it's not really a live event, so it's not really something that would be events-focused. You could use events to point to it, but they wouldn't be sort of the, the functional pieces, it would be a supporting piece. Would the payment be through Get Oiling or could you set up PayPal or Venmo? So, it's a good question. This actually allows you to utilize our Stripe integration in Get Oiling to take payment for these events. So. You, you do have the option, and actually if we go over to the event itself. You do have the option of using this payments code down here. Like a PayPal buy now button and things like that, you could put that here. And that is an option for you for your events. You're not going to be able to, I don't think, take advantage of the, the same extent. Of automations and everything post-purchase, etc. In the same way that you would if you were utilizing. The built-in processor that we have, which is Stripe with Get Oiling, but you do have that option to embed that code if you wanted to use a PayPal button. I do know that from several users' experience, kind of depending on what kind of information you have included. On your Get Oiling site, sometimes PayPal is. A little tricky if you have a network marketing business, they're not always super friendly, unfortunately. So Greg and Sherry, the, the payment, so let me go show you guys real quick, if you don't know about payments and Get Oiling. So payments are, if we go over here to, I want to say it's under my account settings. You can actually, payment processing, that's where you can set up. And accept payments through your Get Oiling site. And so what's going to happen here when you click this button. Is you are going to either connect an existing Stripe account that you have, or you'll create a new Stripe account. And what you'll do with your Stripe account, and that's 100% between you and Stripe. Is you'll connect whatever your preferred bank account is. Maybe if you have one set up for your business, or you know, if, if it's a personal one, however you do that. That would be handled through Stripe. But it would connect to your Get Oiling account and you'd be able to take payment in your store, you'd be able to take payment on pages and at the vault level. Okay, Cornelius, I'm glad that that makes sense, fantastic. Okay, fantastic. So I have, let me see. Here for the call today, Andrea. Andy, there you are, I've got you here for a live call. Hi, I'm going to bring you out to chat. Thanks for coming out today, how can we help?
So I messaged you last week, I think it was, I just added another one of our businesses to the page. But it's completely different and so I was a bit lost. It's more about our, like our homestead, like selling CSAs. And farm fresh eggs and that kind of thing, and I was just struggling with keeping the two separate, but also. Coherent, I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, so where are you wanting to accomplish that, like on your homepage?
Yeah, on the homepage and then also like. For the homepage, when they say, like, where it says contact me or get in touch. I also wondered if there was a way that if they were there, say for the. Homestead stuff, that it automatically tags them for that. If they're there for the young living stuff, it could maybe automatically take them for that. I don't know, I don't know what the possibilities are there.
Yeah, got you, okay. So, so if you use just the hashtag contact, which is what this is here. And potentially what might be on another place or two here, that will. That's just gonna, it's going to be generic and you're not going to know where, because that could be anywhere on your website. So what I would do is, is on the individual pages, so let's just say for instance. On the CSA page, if you wanted to have, maybe I, I would hide this. The headers. Oh yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll show you how to do it. Alright, so I think it's called CSA, oh, it's literally right there, okay. So on CSA, under settings, I would, I would hide the header, or I would maybe create. A separate header here. So like, you know, create a new header that. Well, actually, you know what, here, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to not show the header and I'm just going to add a unique one for this page, right? So this will be, we'll put this over here and we'll make it smaller font. And it'll be. Yep, normal, not bold, okay, and then we're going to align it over here. And then we could say, what do we have on this already? We have Acorage Wellness, Contact Me. So actually, we could just have, you know, any of the information that you wanted to share here. So. Learn more, contact me, right? And we could space these out just a little bit, and I think I do want them to be a bit smaller. Right? So then on Contact Me. We're going to make that a link and that's going to be a lead, right? And then on this page, under leads. You know, in a pop-up, let's just say for instance, this would be, you know, you would basically set this up to operate just like this. So maybe you'll have your, your, your name, your, your face here, maybe not, but you could say. You know, let's talk, right? So we'll just call this, let's talk. And this will be get in touch and here we'll say. Enter your name and, or enter your info below. I'm looking forward to chatting with you, right? And so we can say name, email, phone, we could say. I'm interested in, right? And then you could have like a, maybe a multiple choice, etc. But regardless, when someone initiates a contact for you from this page, from CSA. We're going to have this CSA tag, right? This might be a lead, or you could call this even, you could call it CSA lead. So basically what we're doing here, and you'd want to have some kind of a, I'm going to put no campaign in here for now, but you would want to have some kind of, you know, hey, I'm looking forward to. You know, chatting with you, maybe send them to. You know, a confirmation, if you have a confirmation page, or for now, again, we'll just keep it on this page. So if we save it and view. You do have the ability to kind of mimic what, you know, a header, a header would be. And then when they click contact me, right? Then this will pop up. So we're basically replicating the function of a contact me. Button that would be on your site elsewhere, but we're making sure that on the backend, what they're not seeing is that when they fill this out. It's going to tag them with CSA. Or, you know, if they're wanting to know about more about oils, you'll have another page, I'm sure, where you talk about oils. And then of course, on the backend, just as we've set this up. You know, if they're reaching out, if the contact is, is from that page about oils, then you could have oils lead. As one of the tags that's applied to them when they reach out, does that make sense?
That makes sense, that is brilliant, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Is there anything else we could help with?
Do you know what, that was, I still need to learn a bit more about the member area and the vaults, but I can do that with the videos, I'm not worried about that. That was really my biggest question, thank you so much.
Yeah, for sure, come back anytime, thanks for coming out. Hey, Krishonda, you have a question. What if we really did only want 10 people in the monthly AFT group? What happens the second month when 10 people were already registered month one? Greg question. Great Greg question. How would we do that, Greg?
Alright, they want one people, 10 people in the monthly AFT group. Well, let's see, because this is going to, this is going into a new event though, right?
So the, the way that I was kind of sharing this was, the idea was that you would just have the same product. That you would, you know, use over and over again, but it seems to me in this case that you would just make a duplicate of that product. Rename it, right? And just like basically, you would, you would repeat the whole system every month instead of keeping the product the same. Right?
Yeah, I know, I mean, there is that quantity limitation too, I suppose you could re-up that to 10 every month. That would be possible, another option to play around with.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if, if people can find it and have access to it on a rolling basis. And they are RSVPing for whatever that date is that's available. I mean, you're not necessarily going to know what day of the month, etc. Like if you're dealing with, if volume is an issue for you and you do. You are in a position where you would need to turn folks away, or, or you'd be at risk of that. Then I would just, I, I think I'd just create a new product listing. That actually corresponds directly to that event. So that way, like it's not, you're not sending them to just an AFT group call, you're sending them to the April 6th AFT group call product. That's in your store. And so that way, you know that for, for April, period end of story, you're never going to sell more than 10. And then you just repeat that for May and so on. Right? Does, does that make sense? Did I say that right? That's how I understand it. Okay, I also have Adrian down to chat today. Hello, welcome back.
Hi, how are you?
Great, you?
Good, thanks.
Good, how can we help?
Okay, so I'm, I'm just looking for the best place on my site to include the. Lead magnets that I'm creating. So I have the yoga mat spray up at the top. I want to plug in the Aroma Freedom New Lead Magnet. Also, I have 14 Days of Self-Love, which I promoted during, you know, the month of February. I mean, it's still there for anyone to use anytime. I also have a free meditation as well. So, and even that is on the footer, it's not really working. Perfectly, it's working, but it's not perfectly. So I need to make some changes. So I'm looking for the best place to include all these. The, the Aroma Freedom Lead Magnet, I don't have fully set up yet, I wanted to change a few things, the. 14 Days of Self-Love is already done, and then of course I have the other two, the yoga mat spray and the meditation.
Okay, okay.
So that's basically it.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we need to kind of work out what your offer ladder is, because you've got a lot of front doors. You got a lot of front doors and if we provide too many options too soon, then we'll kind of get more of a deer in the headlights. Then we will get people taking action. So. To get into a little screen sharing situation here on Freeform, so we can just map this out. Alright, so let's, let's talk through the lead magnets that you have right now. Can you tell this to me? And we have a mat spray.
Sure, mat spray. Aro, well, the Aroma Freedom and the Aroma Freedom eventually. The 14 Days of Self-Love and the Free Meditation.
Okay.
So the 14 Days of Self-Love is a lead magnet into, you know, using the oils. It came from Grow Workspace.
From Grow Workspace, okay, okay, okay. And alright, so stepping away from these for just a second. I'll go ahead and put in the, you're eventually going to have a free Aroma Freedom one.
Right.
What's the big problem you're solving? Like what's the main big problem you're solving and, and not, not thinking about what you're selling, but what they see is the problem that you're the person that can, they can be helped by.
Good question. More intentional living, slow living, and then also help with. Feeling tired, exhausted, overwhelmed.
Okay, okay, so, so we've got a range of things there, so. I think, okay, so how do you, how do you help her with those?
Through yoga and/or Aroma Freedom.
Okay, so our main offers are yoga and Aroma Freedom, right? Okay, so these are where we're wanting to move people to. And we want to get them from one of these to one of these as quickly as possible. So the way that I often recommend. Setting something like this up is not necessarily having everything like this visible. So imagine your, your people are over here on the left, right? Our funnel is kind of. I don't know if I can actually rotate this here, I don't think I can, but imagine this is sort of the top of the funnel, our, our, our triangle is. Like, well, this, again, I can't rotate it, but anyway, we're going triangular, we're going triangular toward the right here, alright, so, or my right? So. What I like to do is start off with something that is bite-sized, that's compelling. That solves some kind of a problem or is interesting enough. So think like, this is like. It's an amuse-bouche, an amuse-bouche, if I could use the word correctly. So it's like a little bite, it's an interesting bite, it's an appetizer. Or it's, it's, it's sort of an itchy annoying problem, right? It's one of these two things, it's compelling, it's a, oh yeah, let me get that. And it's not, it's not high commitment, it's relevant, but it's not high commitment, it's easy for them to engage with. So all that I'm aware of, I think the mat spray is an obvious, yes. And I think potentially the meditation, it's like a recording, right?
Yes.
Okay, so these are easy, quick, compelling little bites or grabs. And then you have this opportunity immediately after they've said, yeah, I want that mat spray. For them to learn a little bit more about how you're someone who could help them, and that's going to be the thing that lives right here. As, as the sort of bridge. And I think, oh, that's neat, I can't move this anyway. So this is sort of, you know, a bridge to here. And we have to figure out what this bridge to here is. And sometimes it can be a secondary thing, right? I don't think that self-love is going to be it though. I think maybe a recording of, of, you know, something relating to yoga is going to be like a bridge here between mat spray and join one of my classes. It could be that there's a sequence here of, you know, you teaching. It could be that there's a sequence here of, you know, you teaching five postures and, you know, it's five-day, five-day yoga challenge or something like that. So think like the 14 days of self-love, but like made by you and yoga-focused could be something that helps to kind of bridge that gap between, I'm curious and only very lightly engaged. Through this, I think Adrian is amazing and I love the way she delivers. And I actually could start to see myself working with her to, hey, would you like to work with me, right? And so I think when you have a lot of things that you can offer, you want to start looking at how you can stack them. So I think that this is actually a really great option down here to get from meditation to AFT client. Is potentially whatever this sort of freebie is, right? So if somebody, so now you're looking at kind of funneling where anybody at the top gets the meditation. But maybe only those who take advantage of that AFT freebie get offered that, that session with you. Because these are the people who are most engaged or who are displaying the, the highest degree of trust, right? And, and interacting with you and what you have. So I would start looking at kind of your, your offerings as ways to engage with depth toward the outcome that you want. So in the, in the case of the 14 days of self-love, I think that this is something that could also live with an AFT freebie in the middle. I think any of these obviously can get oiled. But the, the way, the way that we get someone as a customer who stays a customer is going to require some kind of a call. So I mean, obviously, we're going to want to have a, we're, we're just going to call this a, we'll call it an oils consult, even though it's obviously not just an oils thing. Right? But in any of these cases, and this is actually, you know, the offer is young living is a much bigger thing over here. But, but we want to kind of look at how we can position things in order. Because if we put all of these up on the front level and we're sort of, you know, for lack of a better term, we're kind of Walmarting ourself here, like look at all of these different things I do. If we can, if we can say, you know, here's problem one, right? Here, I got a cool thing to help you with problem one. And then maybe I've got a supporting thing that lives here. And then once somebody opts in for that thing, now they get offered this, or now they get offered this, et cetera, right? And you, you do have the ability with the different things that you sell and offer to mention and offer these things inside of any of the campaigns. But you want to think about it as being something that happens after they've come in the door. These are the things that could help them come in the door. And what I would focus on is maybe just, is, is having one or two of, again, that sort of really interesting compelling bite is one way to look at it. Or sort of like an, an itchy, naggy, annoying problem. It's not like a problem of great depth. They're not up at all night thinking about it. But it is something that's got, that, that is in alignment with somebody who has a problem that they're up all night thinking about. And that's a problem that you can solve. Does that make sense?
It does. I mean, I also think that, you know, focusing towards the aroma freedom can also be something like an interesting bite. You know, people are always in the place of, you know, not always, but can be in a place of overwhelm or stressed out and have, you know, some long-lasting change. Or immediate long-lasting change with aroma freedom.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So then what you want to think about is, is that person that you know that you really love working with, that you're really qualified to help. What of the things that you offer is that thing that would just be really compelling and easy for her to say yes to? And that's going to be what you actually place out front on your website as a free thing for her to take advantage of. But what you want to be able to have immediately after she takes advantage of that is some way for the person who resonates with you right away to find their way to this call, right? Or, or to one of these sessions. But for the person who's, who's not there, and that is going to be the majority, you know, just by, by law of, of averages here. Then you want to have, you know, something like this is going to be a great thing to give them an opportunity to just engage with a little greater depth. And I think more of this and sort of additional like things that you can plug into the funnel after they've come in. So what this would eventually look like is, let's just say, for instance, maybe you just have the mat spray and the meditation. And I'm not saying it's necessarily the move, but maybe these are the things that you offer on your website. But then in sequence, you know, you offer this to anybody. And then maybe after they've done this, anybody who does this gets offered this, right? And then maybe anybody like, obviously from AFT, it's easy to send them to an AFT freebie. And anybody who takes advantage of the AFT freebie gets offered this, right? So we're creating kind of conditional response here. So we're, we're going with this, the, the more easy to interact with, more shallow interest, which is what most people engage with, right? Like we're not going to just leap to a call with somebody that we don't know. Or to pay for something with somebody that we don't know. But we do want to be able to have the best likelihood of grabbing them and their attention and keeping them paying attention. And then what you have is, you know, with all of the free stuff and the cool stuff that you have, you've just got a way to create greater relationship and depth of that relationship with people once they're in.
Well, how would you, just a real quick question, how would you approach the class? You know, giving away, giving classes in the aroma freedom. I mean, you're also having the lead magnet go to a class and/or so-called VIP sessions with, with meaning, you know, the, the one-on-ones with the aroma freedom.
Yeah, well, tell me about the class. Do you mean like, like?
Like a group class and aroma freedom.
Oh, like what we were just talking about.
Leading into a group class.
Got you. Yeah, so maybe they have a meditation, maybe you're offering a free meditation. And you're on podcasts, you're talking about this meditation. You're doing YouTube videos, you're mentioning this meditation. You're saying, go to my website and grab the free meditation. Go to my website and grab the free meditation. So you're out there and everything that you're doing at the top level, shallow level of everything is, go to my website, there's a meditation there. We want everybody to go to this, right? Okay, so people come in to, to get the meditation. Maybe somewhere in this funnel, and this will be offered in the email sequence, in the campaign that follows. Maybe they're offered this AFT freebie eventually when you have it. Maybe somewhere in here also in another email, maybe there, you know, you, you let them know. So links to event page, right, where they can RSVP for an event. Right? So anybody who RSVPs for an event, so let's just say, for example, they did RSVP for an event. And maybe this is an event, I'll give it a different color. So this is an event, anybody who, whether they're, they came in from here or they just came in from your website, if they, if they register for an event, they are going to be offered this afterward. Because your campaign that you create for that event is going to be offering this, right? So it doesn't necessarily matter whether they came in through either of these, or if they've taken advantage of these guys. This is always going to send them here, because this is really designed to get you more of these. Right? Yeah, so this operates independently. And so it's not about kind of creating an entire tree, beginning with this and ending at this. It's, it's kind of creating lanes where people can engage. Because after the AFT freebie, for instance, if somebody doesn't convert, you just kind of want that person, and actually I'll just use a different shape here. We want to just put them on our general mailing list. Right? And so we'll put them onto our general mailing list after they haven't converted. And you're just, you know, when you create a new blog post, et cetera, you might actually say, hey, by the way, I've got this 14 days of self-love. You could take advantage of it. And maybe, you know, just from a link that you send in the general mailing list, you could send to any of the, the free things that you offer, whether they've taken advantage of it or not yet, doesn't matter. You send them here and now we're sort of re-establishing this pattern of, it's, it's almost like they're a new lead again. Except now they're, they're going, they're, they already have some familiarity with you. And they're even more likely to then take advantage of this thing that's happening on the other side of this. And this might be the point of entry for someone else, right?
Right, okay.
Right? So, so basically what you're doing is you're creating these sort of mini lanes that have, they have a beginning and, and obviously the end is always going to be something that looks like one of these guys, right? But we, but we want to be able to have, I mean, general mailing list is always going to be one of those options. Because you want to be sending out your content on a, on a ongoing basis to keep your list engaged. But what, when you do, you always have that ability to say, you know, hey, by the way, today I'm talking about boundaries. And, and I feel like it's just really important for us to, to understand that boundaries are self-love. Hey, by the way, I have this little thing I made a while back on self-love. If you haven't taken advantage of it, click here, right? And now they get this, right? And so you could use this, like just think about the breadth of what you have to offer in the way of these types of things. As something that you can use to add value to people that you've already got into the funnel.
Got it.
Right?
Very good.
Yeah, but on your website itself, minimize the number of doors that get them in. Because, because if, if we have too many, they won't pick any.
Right, got it.
Awesome.
Okay, sounds good.
I hope that that helped. I hope that visual made sense.
No, it helped. There's a lot of food, a lot of food for thought. I think I'm going to need to review what you shared and then, you know, implement. A little bit differently.
Yeah, feel, feel free to come back here and, and we can talk some more.
Oh, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure thing. Awesome. All right, Catherine, I see you have your hand up. Can you let me know in the chat if you are looking for help? We could take a moment and bring you out to chat if so. Yeah, great questions, you guys. Was not expecting to go through an offer ladder today. That was exciting. I think for anybody who is, who doesn't have everything set up just yet, if that kind of bugged your eyes out, just get excited. Because, you know, the future is big and bright for you. And there's lots of things you could do with Get Oiling. Including very, you know, very complex, you know, professional sort of marketing systems, like what we're just discussing here with, with Adrian. So thank you guys for being here today. I hope you're inspired to start selling your expertise, to have more make and take events. And to get your store set up on your Get Oiling site, so that you can be offering more of the amazing things that you do. We'll be back here same time next week. Till then, have a great week, everybody.